And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August Board Meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. And we will start, as usual, with a report from our clerk as to actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. For some reason, it seems like we've been here all afternoon. We have. On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved an unpaid leave of absence retroactively from July 20 through August 21, 2009, for a classified employee. And on a seven to zero vote, the Board approved settlement of a potential litigation in the amount of $2,700. That's all that matters, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we traditionally begin with invocations. Tonight will be no exception. We invite you to stand for an invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Padberg will lead the invocation. I have the honor of leading the pledge.
All right. Good evening. Please bow your heads. Our Father, we ask for your blessings on these proceedings this evening. Guide us in our deliberations and decisions. We also ask that you bless the firefighters who bravely battle the raging fires in California tonight. And please bless the souls of the two firefighters who died in this battle. Also bless and guide the families as they grieve for their loss. We also ask that you bless all of our servicemen and women fighting for freedom around the world and the recently departed U.S. soldier who was killed in Afghanistan and who resided in San Clemente. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag-
... of the United States of America-
... and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a number of requests to speak, and I am going to begin with the Orange County Treasurer, who is here to discuss budget numbers on the night we pass our budget. So let me call forward the Orange County Treasurer, Chris Street.
Mr. President, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Chancellor, thank you. Chris Street, Orange County Treasurer, Tax Collector. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our tax collections so you can do some planning. You have a handout, I believe that most, anybody in the audience not have the handout, we could pass it out. But essentially, the handout refers to the secured property tax collections in the county of Orange over the last few years, plus the projection for this year. As you can see, that we had a very strong double-digit compounded record for several years of rising tax collections. Last year, even in the face of a very difficult housing industry, assessed valuations in Orange County, California were at 4.23 percent. And in fact, in most counties here in Southern California, they were actually up. This year, we expect to be down about 1.2 percent. I can't be more specific as to South Orange County Community College District, but we expect right now for the part of Orange County in the north to be weaker than that of the south. But I think this gives you a sense of where we are and for your planning purposes. I can tell you that interest rates on your investments in the county pool are approximately earning a yield of 2.24 percent. We are rated AAAM, one of only 14 organizations in the United States to achieve the highest rating possible. We are still adopting a very conservative position. We look for this coming year to have very difficult time for commercial real estate. To give you some of the sense of perhaps development lands and raw areas and how they're being affected by the current downturn in commercial real estate, recently, we had a appeal for the assessment of what's called the Tustin Legacy Project for Shea Homes. It had been assessed at $365 million. The assessment appeal came in at $85 million. And Tustin Legacy Shea Homes produced an appraisal from Citicorp for $42 million on the same piece of, as people like to call it, dirt. Also, in the last week and a half, a $200 million additional assessment, which was added to the Great Park LNR project when they received a development agreement with the City of Irvine, the assessor raised the assessment by about $200 million. He withdrew that assessment as of last week. Once again, these are commercial properties. It's a very big pool of tax collection here in the county of Orange. Obviously, undeveloped parcels are much more difficult to assess. Generally speaking, we do not expect to have a lot of positive news over the next year. And in fact, my personal prediction is that the year following this will be down about 4% to 5%. Once again, weaker in the north, a little stronger in the south, but very difficult numbers. As you know, the state of California is suffering about a $24 billion budget shortfall. Part of that is currently being plugged by the stimulus program, which will fade through next year. So I think that our property taxes will be a little bit weaker, and in fact, this is the first time, I believe, since the 1930s that our assessments have actually gone down. But it's a time to watch your pennies and be more efficient. I can tell you, at the Orange County Treasurer Tax Collector's office, we continue to cut our staff. We've cut it about 25% since I've joined as Treasurer, and we cut our overall expense ratios and, once again, attempt to have very high collections. We are the highest collector in the state of California with about a 96% on-time performance. We finance the 4% shortfall. Some people refer to this as teeter. So you're receiving 100% of that, which you're entitled to at full collection. Available for any questions, should you have any?
Questions? Well, thank you for the good news. Appreciate it. Several more requests to speak. We will start with Claire Cesario Silva.
I'm actually speaking on behalf of Carmen Mado Hernandez Bravo. I'm going to read a statement that she prepared, but I agree wholeheartedly with the sentiments in this statement. "I am Carmen Mado Hernandez Bravo, and I teach Spanish language and literature. I am very offended by the Christian prayers you continue to include in college and district events. I was raised going to Catholic school for 13 years, and the nuns in charge of my education, as well as my Catholic parents, taught me to respect the beliefs of all people. I think that, according to them, your actions are not very Christian, since you do not respect the diversity of religious beliefs we have on this campus. We have recently started the Egypt Community College Initiative, a program meant to promote respect for cultural diversity." This is a direct quote from the email sent from the district to the faculty on July 29. "How can you claim to respect cultural diversity when you continue to impose your own religious beliefs on the rest of the district? You have tried to claim that your prayers are inclusive. I do not think so. And this year, the Chancellor's opening session at in-service ended with an explicit reference to Jesus Christ as someone who had offered to die for all of us. This is a sectarian Christian belief. You are welcome to believe it, but you are wrong to try to impose it on others and hypocritical to claim to respect cultural diversity as you do this." Thank you.
Up next, Ronnie LeBauer.
My name is Ronnie LeBauer, and I teach ESL, English as a Second Language, here at Saddleback. My work at the college involves daily recognition and respect for diversity. And I would also like to comment on the Chancellor's opening session on August 17. The kickoff to the new academic year was well-planned and informative until those final moments. The last minutes included a video presentation, which ended with a slide saying that Jesus Christ died for our souls. It's hard for me to imagine that the Board knew that this was on the agenda, yet that seems to be the case. The Board has been repeatedly asked to respect the religious diversity of the community by refraining from specific religious appeals at college and district events, and, once again, this hasn't happened. We all know that our community is diverse and that this is a public, not a religious institution. This reference to a single religious figure and a particular religious belief system at this very public opening event was, I believe, disrespectful to all in the audience who are not subscribers to that particular religious belief, along with anyone of any religious creed or not who believes that specific religious appeals are private matters and inappropriate at secular public events. If we're truly a college of the community, then we need to be inclusive of all in our communications and events. I believe the college staff and faculty and members of the community deserve an apology for this lack of sensitivity. Thank you.
Carla Westfall.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Carla Westfall, and I teach math here at Saddleback College. For years, I, along with many others, have been asking you to stop the practice of including prayers at school and district events. You have claimed that these prayers are acceptable because they are non-sectarian, as if that eliminates their divisive nature, and as if you have the authority to speak for the community on religious matters, provided you don't get too specific. Further, your claim that your prayers are non-sectarian is virtually impossible to believe after the events of the Chancellor's opening session of in-service. In addition to the prayer offered by Trustee Williams, you showed a PowerPoint presentation accompanying the song "God Bless the USA." At the end of this presentation, the following words appeared on the screen, and I quote: "Only two defining forces have ever offered to die for you: Jesus Christ and the American G.I. One died for your soul; the other died for your freedom. To call Jesus the Christ and to say He died for my soul is an explicitly Christian belief. There is no legal gray area here. To promote sectarian beliefs at a public school is not only rude and inconsiderate, it is unconstitutional. In this time of economic hardship, you are spending taxpayer money on a lawyer to defend your practice of praying at public events. You are either getting very bad advice or choosing to ignore the advice you get. Either way, this fiscal irresponsibility is inexcusable, as is your disregard for the members of our community who are not Christian. I ask you, for what I hope is the last time, to respect the religious diversity of our community and to stop praying at school and district events. Thank you."
And now for something completely different, Bob Cosgrove.
And passing out a little flyer that some of you may have seen. It was recognition of the new faculty who have arrived at Saddleback Campus, 15 in total. And you have an insert in there that I wrote up this afternoon, thanking you for hiring these faculty members, as well certainly our colleagues at IVC. They're all part of the faculty throughout the district. The new faculty bring, we hope, new ideas to teaching and new ideas that will help us to be more efficient and more effective in and out of the classroom. So I thank you once. Another reason to thank you is for the discussions you've been having regarding funding for the scheduled maintenance, some of them long overdue, with 30- and 40-year-old buildings at Saddleback. We know there are pressing issues throughout the district where money is concerned. But we are very concerned about the library and the Mass Science Building, which are in desperate need of retrofitting in order to make them architecturally current, structurally sound, and OSHA-safe. Aging may be good, as I point out here, even excellent in some wines and Scotches and in elder statesmen and stateswomen, but not in buildings that migrate down hills or whose air conditioning doesn't circulate. Thank you twice for directing money to solve some of these problems. I'd also like to recognize the excellent strategic planning work that's going on at Saddleback College under the expertise of Claire Cesario Silva, who is here this evening, to also talk to you about this issue, and for addition to the Saddleback team of Gretchen Bender, who will be in charge of strategic planning and grants and working together with her and with our other colleagues, we hope to make this a much better place. And finally, Saddleback appreciates the opportunity to work with our colleagues at IVC in developing and working with our colleagues at ATEP. And just a little PS, I hope Gary Portner is enjoying the lanai in Hawaii.
Thank you. We turn to the Chancellor briefly.
I would just like to respectfully offer the following statement with respect to the Chancellor's opening session. It was a diverse Chancellor, the Chancellor's opening session, who was not offended. Thank you.
At this point, we will move to Board reports, and, as usual, start with Trustee J.
The last month or so, I want to thank everybody for the flowers and the cards and a couple cases of letters that I received, and I seem to be vertical. So anyway, I'm back trying to make people miserable, as usual. But I do want to say, obviously, the system hasn't broken down. I understand we had a wonderful opening. Figure I just heard from the Chancellor himself was that at this point, we're about 10% ahead of last year enrollment-wise, and we're just waiting for another week till the census date rolls around and find that's true in the final measure or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the opening session. However, I did see it on Channel 39 and was very impressed. I assumed it also went out on the IVC television channel. In the past week, I have attended the Saddleback College Foundation meeting, the Saddleback first scrimmage of their football team, and they had a barbecue kickoff. I also attended the meeting of the Chancellor's Circle for the California Community College District, or California Community College League with Chancellor Jack Scott, and that was at IVC, and a very well-attended and excellent event. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend you, Dawn, Mr. President, and Chancellor Mather. While I was not able to attend the Chancellor's opening session and did not emcee this year, you did, Mr. President, and I have heard nothing but magnificent comments about the success of that morning from various members of the community, both on campus and off campus, and I salute both of you for a job well done. Coming to campus soon because 9/11 is on the horizon will be commemorations of the attack on America on September 11. I look forward to participating. I hope that presidents of our college will address that occasion in their reports. I certainly want to welcome and encourage faculty, students, administration, and the community who watches us on television to come and be with us in our district on September 11 that we might never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Williams.
All in the interest of time, no report tonight.
Thank you. Briefly, I had the pleasure of participating in the Chancellor's opening session, as was mentioned, and I want to thank you for those kind words, Trustee Fuentes. And I also want to extend my congratulations. It was a job well done by all concerned, other than that emcee guy, and it was a good opportunity for us to showcase some of the talented students and faculty at both colleges. So to Chancellor Mather and all who were involved in putting it together, thank you very much for a job very well done. I also want to specifically take a second just to thank Dr. Michael Drake, Chancellor at UCI, for his presence and his address. And I want to extend best wishes to everyone in the college community, whether you made the opening session or not, for a successful semester. In addition to the Chancellor's opening session, I participated in IVC's continued accreditation self-study efforts, and I want to thank Dr. Carmen Dominguez. I don't see her here yet today. Her and Trustee Lang, as it's off to work they go on Saddleback College's accreditations. I hope she's not bashful or grumpy with me for mentioning it, but good luck with that work. Finally, of course, just earlier today, we met to share the ATEP concept plan with the community, and I want to thank again Dr. Mather, Gary Portner, Dr. Peebles, the two college presidents who are crucial to that project, and the whole team for what I thought was a great and informative presentation that seemed to be quite well-received by the community. So thank you to all of you folks for that. And finally, I did have a chance to talk to Gary Portner on an item that is on the agenda tonight, and he is very much enjoying Hawaii and very much did not want to hear from me. Thank you all. Trustee Milchiker.
Hello, and I very much welcome Trustee J. Beck, and I'm delighted that he's doing wonderfully now, so we missed you. And just one meeting, it wasn't a long time, but I'm glad you're back. And I also want to thank President Rockmore for inviting the board members to attend the Chancellor's Roundtable. This is a meeting of all the presidents of all the college, and Dr. Rockmore is the president of all the presidents of the community colleges in the state, and so he was able to invite the Board to hear the statewide Chancellor, Jack Scott, speak. And he and I were able to reminisce about the old times, and he gave a very uplifting speech about how great the community colleges are, which we all, everyone in the room believed it already, but it was nice to hear it. I also attended what they call professional development days, which is a week-long activities for our faculty that have come back from the summer, and this takes place a week before classes begin. So this is Saddleback Colleges, and this is Irvine Valley Colleges. And you can find them online as well, and I would recommend to anyone that's really interested in what's going on in the college to attend these, because you really have an opportunity to interact with the faculty and the administrators and the staff. And when you attend the president's opening session, you really do find out what they plan for the college for the coming year. And I attended the faculty breakfast and the classified breakfast, which was really all very inspiring, and there was a wonderful presentation on, let me see if I have it here. I'm going to make sure I give you the correct name for it. It was a geek report, how to turbocharge your computer and how to turbocharge your email, and that was given by Bob Bremucci and Jim Gaston. And as usual, it was very exciting and very much entertaining, and we learned how to get through our hundreds of emails in very short time. You just put them all in a different folder, and then they're gone. So that's the trick. So I went home and immediately did that, so I feel really good. So welcome back to everyone, and we're looking forward to having a wonderful semester. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the in-service and Chancellor's opening session, although not too unfortunately, it was because I was on vacation. So that was a lot of fun, but sorry to have missed that. Before that, I also attended the State Chancellor's meeting that we had at IVC as well, and that went very well. Congratulations to Glenn and your team for putting that together. Wanted to wish everybody a very successful new academic year. I already extended the congratulations to Jim Gaston and obviously the rest of your team on successful MySite launch for the new year and how successful that went for everybody. So it looks like we're off to a good start.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Bailey.
I also attended the Chancellor's opening session at IVC, as well as Welcome Week at both Saddleback and IVC. It was nice seeing all the clubs, signing up people, and enjoying the barbecues.
Is your microphone on?
It is.
Can you speak louder?
Do you want me to repeat everything?
Thank you. All right. And let's hear from the Chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. I'd like to mention that fall enrollment, how that is doing, district-wide, the number of students in terms of head count is up by 7.5%. In terms of the full-time equivalent students, it's up, as of this morning, 9.9, almost 10%, and the productivity is up by 6%. Let me mention that last year, our enrollment grew by about 15%, and this is 10% on top of that. So we are serving a lot more students this year than last year in itself. At the last board meeting, it was mentioned by President Wagner that I was invited to be on a panel at the Road to Recovery Conference put together by the Governor's Office, and there was a lot of fun representing the district and talking about how our colleges and campuses, including ATEP, are making a difference in terms of career technical education programs in Orange County. And we have received a resolution from the Orange County Boras Supervisors for the Community College Month, which was in April. We received this wonderful resolution, signed by all five members of the County Boras Supervisors. So I wanted to publicly thank them, and will also be sending a letter thanking them for adopting this resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Quick housekeeping detail, we will advance Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.4, which are the budget proposals. We will deal with those right after the discussion item. And Item 6.10, the layoff, that issue has been resolved, and that is going to go away. We don't have to do the layoffs. So with those housekeeping details, let's move now to Item 4.0. It's our monthly discussion item regarding the strategic planning process. Oh, and wait, wait, wait. My apologies, you're right, I'm moving way too fast. We do have a request for report. Apologies for missing that. Any agenda, there is a request for report from Trustee Fuentes regarding salaries of college professors in Orange County. Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe the Chancellor can fill in some of the details, but I noticed that the Orange County Register published recently a comparative study on professional salaries in the Orange County community at the university and state college levels, and I wanted to have us, you might say, complement or enlarge upon that to give us a comparative picture with our district. And I have sent a formal request to the Chancellor in that regard.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. And Trustee Williams.
Just briefly, I have a subscription to the Chronicle of Higher Ed. Just yesterday, the annual almanac issue arrived, and there's a lot of salary data on a nationwide basis in there, and I believe California as well. So just FYI.
All right. Thank you, Chancellor.
Yeah, I would just like to confirm that, yes, indeed, I have received Trustee Fuentes' request, and in about a month or two, we should be able to provide you a report on your request.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the request, signify by saying aye. Opposed, stench as matter carries unanimously. Gentlemen, you're waiting patiently, thank you. We now turn to our discussion item for the day, and I see President Rockmore stepping to the mic. Have at it.
Okay. Thank you very much, trustees, Chancellor Mather. It's absolutely my pleasure to talk a little bit about our strategic planning process. Before I dive into this, know that it's a collective effort. Some folks in the room here, Wendy Gabriella, Devi Katchatrian, by the way, who's a brand-new father, had, and Chris Tarman, who couldn't be here tonight, our researcher, played a major role in putting this plan together. We started this effort back in 2005 as a result of an accreditation recommendation, and within that process, we've tied all of the accreditation standards to this. So we need to integrate planning with budget development, which is a key element, and also within the decision-making process at the college, and make sure that it is data-driven and that it focuses on student learning. When you take a look at the process itself, it begins with the development or review of- of the mission statement, uh, then followed by annual goals, um, which are, of course, combined with the goals approved by the, uh, board of trustees. Uh, the mission statement, uh, and the long-term goals actually drive this entire strategic planning process. Both of these go through an annual review, and all constituent groups have the opportunity for effective participation, uh, in that process. Following that, we get into, uh, the planning assumptions. Now, these are derived from research and, uh, our interpretations of the planning, uh, environment, and currently, the Office of Research, Planning, and Accreditation provides, uh, data, uh, to the planning assumptions. So, we fondly refer these, uh, to these as the banker boxes, and each of those are labeled, uh, of course, they're now electronic, but we have data in the area of demographics, economy, employment, educational trends, social trends, public policies, and technology. That then is followed by our, our objectives, which are derived from these planning assumptions. Uh, these are quantifiable, they are time-sensitive, and, uh, achieve our college goals. We then move into the strategies, and these are methods to achieve a specific objective. Uh, an objective can be achieved by one or more, uh, strategies, and research also, uh, informs the strategies. Okay, we then move to budget and resource planning, and of course, this is done, uh, by a special process that we have, and that is by developing, uh, strategy forms that, uh, are, uh, put into the system for review. We get to the process of elimination, and then we move over to a most critical portion, which is also a part of the accreditation process, uh, is the evaluation of what we've done that year before we move back and continue that loop through research. The 2008, 2009, we're proud to say, was the first year that all of these elements came together successfully, and when you combine all of the, uh, data pieces together, which includes the full spectrum of, uh, uh, equipment and, uh, staffing and, and supplies, uh, all total, there was about a million dollars, uh, that was allocated, uh, through this process. Now, the structure itself, uh, we have, uh, four committees, uh, that you can read here that each have a different, uh, role to play, uh, in the decision-making process. Uh, that information then flows upward to an oversight committee, the Planning and Oversight and Budget Development Committee. This is where the tie to budget takes place. And so, you see that there's an interaction here between each of these separate committees, uh, as they're reviewing, uh, goals and strategies, that bring those forward for budget recommendations, which finally, uh, make their way up to the IVC Executive Council, which is made up of the president, the vice presidents, and the, uh, budget manager. In our satisfaction survey, just done recently for accreditation purposes, we're proud to say that 72 percent of, uh, the employees surveyed were familiar with the mission statement and goals, and that 59 percent of the respondents are familiar with our strategic, strategic planning process, and of those who are, uh, aware of the process, about 75 percent, uh, reported that they feel that that process is in fact effective. Now, this slide, I don't expect you to read, I put this up just to show you that we have a roadmap. Uh, we can provide a copy of that if you wish, but it shows how this decision-making process interacts all throughout the year. The lower portion shows how we develop new goals, where we look at and measure the years' prior goals, and, and then move through this cycle back and forth. So, we do have a roadmap that we do follow, as complicated as it does appear here. Recent developments, uh, just to finish up, the college-wide review of the mission statement and college goals will begin this fall, and, uh, we're already working on the, uh, 9-10 strategic plan, and, uh, we're working on some tracking software to help us with the strategy form process, and the research office is going to implement a new research request form that helps connect the strategic, uh, planning process with what they do, uh, on a daily basis. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
All right, seeing none, let's move to President Bernadette.
Thank you. The renowned Stephen Covey, who y'all might know as, uh, one of the management gurus in the, uh, in the United States, sets up that, I like to quote, and also our chancellor does often too, and that is, if we plan, if we fail to plan, we plan to fail. I'm very proud that, uh, and, and pleased that our board and our chancellor have taken such a very important priority in our planning of this district, in our college. And so, when I came on board, I made sure that emphasis in planning would be placed greatly on the college. And the reasons for that is, uh, first is that, on this emphasis of planning, is that you need to have a consensus. Everybody on the campus needs to agree on where we want to go. And where we want to go is providing that roadmap to get there, and more importantly, how do we make our decisions based on data, as opposed to just whims or other reasons that things are made? We need to basically say, why are we doing this? We need to provide, provide the support that does that. We also, most important in strategic planning is to make sure it's connected to our budget and resource allocations. After all, that's the most important thing we could do with everything we have, is how we utilize our resources. And continuous improvement is what it's all about. We're here to constantly, continually to improve every element of our campus. That's what we're all trying to do here for the benefit of our students and student success, as well as for, frankly, a great opera, a place for all of us to work, and of course, a place to be in our community. And finally, of course, it's something that we need to do, and very much need to do for accreditation, which they're placing much more emphasis on it. We had our employee survey for accreditation as well, just this last spring, and 83 percent, uh, of our employees feel they have the opportunity to participate in planning. 86 percent of them responded that they feel reliable data is used for planning at the campus, and 85 percent feel their ideas are listened to and considered during the planning process. I wanted to give you a little bit of history and about the next steps of where we're at in strategic planning. Uh, first, it should be known that Saddleback College has, has always done planning, uh, but in 2006, we began working on a formalized strategic planning for the first time. Our first three-year strategic plan was developed, uh, for 2007, 2010, and then when we came on board, when I came on board, as a part of our efforts towards continuous improvement, we evaluated and revised our strategic planning process based on the successes and challenges of the first plan. In fact, I might say, since she's here, Professor Claire Cesario Silva was instrumental, not only in the initial process, but also in this revision and to our new, our revision, revision of our new strategic planning process, which I provided a copy for you in detail at each of your seats. Thank you, Claire. While fine-tuning the process for greater success, in particular, uh, we were looking at for budget integration, increased faculty and staff participation, and improved data-driven Finally, one of the first things we was able to do was to, uh, is to hire, uh, rehire, I should say, a, a new director of planning, research, and grants. After all, if you're serious about strategic planning, you have to have somebody that's, that is their full-time responsibility, or else it's very hard to keep it going. And the in-service, which was just a week and a half ago, we kicked off our new strategic planning process, and that's developing, will culminate in a plan for 2010, 2013 three-year plan, uh, which will be completed in the spring. Before you up, I have up there real quick, is, I'm not going to go through all of it, is our new organization that was developed, uh, for, in our process, for strategic planning. What's key about this is that it outlines and provides an important, critical role for our four participatory governance groups. It creates four strategic planning groups that actually, uh, encompass every single element of the campus. Those four groups, educational development, student affairs, operational support and resources, and college advancement, cover every single aspect of the college. There is nobody slipping, nobody part of the strategic planning, uh, process, they're all included. And then, of course, it incorporates something that's very important for accreditation and important to us for continuous improvement, is our program reviews, student learning outcomes, and administrative unit reviews. And finally, of course, our, our planning budget and steering committee, which once again, resources are all about. The 2010, 2013 strategic planning process began earlier this year with the review and revision to the current mission, vision, and values. In fact, the one that has been updated is going to be on your agenda for approval tonight. We are currently in the process of completing the environmental scan and SWOT analysis. If you look across the chart from left to right, and then down and around, it shows you the months and the, and the, the time, uh, schedule there is for each of these, uh, different developments. Uh, after we do the environmental scan and SWOT analysis, uh, these, along with the district goals, will be, will be used to produce our three, uh, college-wide three-year strategic directions and goals. Then strategies are developed to lay out the specific action steps needed to achieve our goals. The final strategic plan will be finished in March 2010, and will be used once again for budgeting and resource prioritization for the next academic year and beyond. Implementation begins this summer with constant evaluation of our progress, and of course, annual reports to the college district and board of trustees. Thank you very much. Any questions?
All right, seeing none, thank you, and Dr. Peebles?
Thank you, trustees. The strategic planning process at, um, ATEP, of course, uh, began soon after the conveyance of the land in 2004, and then in 2005, the beginning of, um, committees and college-wide meetings. The, uh, planning committees, uh, certainly included, uh, administrators, managers, faculty, and classified staff. There were college-wide meetings at Saddleback and both IVC. There were college forums and presentations, including, uh, groups like the Orange County Business Council, and, uh, advisor groups, both civic and, including technology, innovation, education, and professional. Again, with the, um, conveyance of the land, in 2005, there was in fact, a district management council and a, uh, planning retreat on ATEP that was, um, attended, uh, by many across the district. In 2006, uh, the ATEP Planning Steering Committee was commenced, again, with a diverse group of administrators, managers, managers, faculty, and classified staff. Most recently, in, um, 2007, the Long Range Academic and Facilities Plan Task Force was created, and over that year, administrators, managers, faculty, classified staff, met to determine the comprehensive, uh, academic plan and, uh, Long Range Facilities Plan, which was then considered by the board of trustees in November of 2008 and approved. And then culminating in further work following that plan, our consultants and others worked, um, and brought to the board of trustees in March of 2009, the Phase 3A Concept Plan. Following that, then during the spring of '09, there were presentations both at IVC and Saddleback College with an overview and presentation to faculty and leadership, providing a question-answer periods for information. That is our strategic planning process to date at ATEP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions or comments from the board, as any of the three of them? Gentlemen, thank you very much. At this point, we are going to advance item 6.1, and I will start, that is the, uh, adoption of our final budget, and I will start with the chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. Uh, since Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner is not here, uh, with us this evening, he's on vacation, and, um, so the district budget will be presented by, um, District Budget Director Beth Muller, um, along with any assistance, uh, she may need from the college budget directors. Let me set this stage, if I may. And the district budget has been developed under the most difficult estate budgetary environment, as you know. The district budget, final budget that we are presenting to you this evening, has been developed per board-approved budget guidelines with contingency, for example, at 7.5 percent. It's a balanced budget, and it, uh, demonstrates that we operate within our means. Of course, the district budget is impacted by the state budget. As far as the state budget is concerned, I honestly believe that the state continues to adopt a smoke-and-mirror-type budgets for the, and it has been doing so for the last 15 to 20 years. It used to be that the state will adopt an annual budget. All across the state, agencies were hoping that the state will adopt a two-year budget so that we can do better planning, but instead, what it has come to our attention is that it's mostly a five-to-six-month adoption, because the state has been dealing with mid-year cuts. And again, for this year, even though the state has adopted a budget, uh, we are already hearing about 16.5 billion budget shortfall for this year. Uh, earlier this evening, Orange County Treasurer, Chris Street, mentioned a shortfall of $24 billion. I was paying very close attention to that. So, obviously, there will be mid-year cuts, and that will definitely affect California community colleges. Well, here's another very disturbing piece of information that came from the Community College League of California office in an email from Scott Clay to us, that the state has a $200 billion in, uh, other-year liabilities, considering deferrals, bond debt, pension, and retiree health liabilities. $200 billion, also, they have to find to deal with these issues. We're all hearing that next year will be an even tougher year, and already is projected for next year that there'll be a definitely, uh, there'll definitely be a $7 to $8 billion shortfall, depending upon how the state deals with the shortfall. This year, it may be even larger. Already this year, we have experienced cuts to categorical programs like EOPS, DSPNS, and the like across the state, and additional cuts are expected, no question about it, for next year. Now, here's some other interesting facts. There are decreasing property taxes, as Orange County Treasurer Chris Street mentioned, due to home foreclosures and property tax reassessments. As a result, this decreases our basic aid dollars. Also, because of record eastern enrollment, our basic aid dollars decrease because more property taxes go for a good cause in terms of, uh, supporting the college's operational budgets, part of the general fund. Another thing that we should keep in mind is that the state has adopted this year's budget in the hope that the state will receive somewhere around $130 million of federal stimulus money. Now, it's already projected that we're not going to get it. We're not going to get $130 million. We'll be lucky we get $60 million. It may be even a lot less. And on the top of that, that's only for one year, this year, and then what? In the meantime, I'm pleased to report to the board that all three campuses are engaged in a serious efficiency review, meaning doing everything we can at all three campuses and the district to make sure that we run our operations as efficiently, as least expensively as possible. In conclusion, even though we have managed our financial resources well in this district with the help of everyone, the state of California has not. Therefore, we are not out of the woods yet. At this point, I'd like to call upon District Budget Director Beth Muller to highlight the district budget with focus on changes since the tentative budget was adopted. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to start with saying there are really only three notable changes since the tentative budget. The first, we have added a 10th principle to our budget development guidelines. This 10th principle limits our growth to the maximum rate allowed by the California Community College system, and also limits it to the amount funded through SB 361. SB 361 is the funding, the, the law, the bill that funds all the community colleges throughout the state of California, and that is what we follow here, even though we're basic aid district, we follow that to fund our two colleges. The second change that has occurred is just that our ending balances have been updated. At tentative budget, they were estimated, and now we've closed our books and we have actual numbers. And the third item is that at the tentative budget, we budgeted our categorical projects according to past practice, which was usually 95 percent of prior years. This year, or at this time, we know that the cuts will be, uh, greater, and so we have budgeted accordingly to those cuts, uh, the rates that were given to us from the state. Now, to move on to our budget, our general fund is $224.6 million. General fund is made up of unrestricted and restricted funds. The unrestricted fund is $201.2 million, and the restricted is $23.4 million. Other funds, which comprise community ed, child development, capital outlay, self-insurance, retiree benefits, amount to $211 million, for a total budget of $435.6 million for all funds. Final budget assumptions that we used are an increase of revenue of $13.6 million. $13.6 million... $13.6 million has two parts to it. There is $6.8 million in ongoing revenue resulting from an increase to the college's base funding from additional FTES earned or achieved in 2008/09. There is another $6.8 million in one-time funds for FTES growth that was earned in 2008/09, which was not included in the college's 2008/09 budget. We have a 0% COLA and also 0% growth in our current, in the final budget, which is in agreement with the state budget. The 2008/09 general fund unrestricted ending balance is $26.6 million. It includes the contingency that was carried forward from last year. Additional assumptions the final budget includes, as the chancellor said, 7.5% reserve for economic uncertainties. This is in agreement with the board budget development guidelines. We have a 1.5% increase for health and welfare benefits, and property and liability insurance increased 3%. Salary increases included in our final budget are 1% for the faculty, 1% for CSEA in accordance with the contracts, Administrators, Managers, and Police Officers Association, 0%. Categorical programs. $193 million reduction has occurred statewide to categorical programs. How does that affect our district? Our estimated reductions are a little bit more than $2 million. Now, as the chancellor said, this money, the categorical budget, is dependent on stimulus money from the federal government, amounting to $130 million. If that stimulus money comes in less, which is anticipated at this point, these categorical budgets will be reduced more. Some programs have been eliminated completely. Those two programs are instructional equipment and scheduled maintenance. Financial aid has a slight increase this year. That is the only program. Other programs listed here, most of them are reduced 16%, with TIP, telecommunications technology, being reduced 20%. The next slide shows the programs that are reduced 32%. Now, this group of programs is in a category new that, new that the state is allowing what's called flexibility. The state is saying that for these programs, if a district chooses, they can move money from this, one of these programs to another program. But in order to do this, a regularly scheduled public meeting must be held with testimony permitted from the public. This practice of flexibility will be locked into place until 2012/13. Here's a list of our basic aid receipts to date. Estimated basic aid revenue for the upcoming budget year is $33,827,968. In accordance with the Orange County Controller and Treasurer's offices, the projections for secured property taxes were reduced 2% for this year and 7% for next year. Basic aid funds that are included in this final budget at this time are $2.5 million for retiree benefit expenses, $2.5 million for the ATEP operating budget, $2 million for ATEP negotiations, $1 million for ATEP development, $60,000 for legislative advocacy for basic aid issues, and a remaining $29.9 million for funding for future capital projects. The next slide we've included has some historical data. Next several slides. This slide shows total student tuition enrollment fees for the last four years and what is projected for the next year. You might see a decline in the year 2007/08. This decline reflects the reduction in fees from $26 per unit to $20 per unit, and also at the time of, period of declining enrollment at the district. Enrollment was increased, showed improvement in 2008/09, and now in 2010, the legislature has increased the per-unit fee to $26 from $20. So we're projecting an increase in enrollment fees for, in the final budget. This slide compares the budget to what we actually received, and if you'll look, we're pretty close to what we budget and what we actually get. We can give credit to this, to the consultation that we receive every year with the Orange County Auditor Controller and the Orange County Treasurer's office. Each year, we consult them and get information on what they predict our taxes will come in for the following year, and we take their information and base our budget on that. And we're pretty close with our property taxes coming in to what budget is. This slide shows the college operating budget. This is their total budget. This also includes their ending balances. So the increases can vary from year to year based on the growth that the colleges receive or the growth included in their budget, and also an ending balance that might be carried from one year to another. Here is a slide showing our ending balances district-wide. You'll see a spike in the year 2007/08. We can attribute that spike to the monitoring of expenses due to our 50% law compliance. That year, we watched our spending very closely to ensure that by the end of the year, we would be compliant with the law. Also, we were in negotiations with the faculty, and the contract had not yet been settled. And the last slide shows our basic aid funds for the past 10 years since we've been on basic aid. Our actual receipts at the end of 2008/09, total $316 million. At that point, the board had committed $312 million, and expenses to date, money that was spent on the various projects, are a little bit more than $207 million. Are there any questions?
Trustee Williams.
Yes, please convey to Gary, Deputy Chancellor Portner. I appreciate the historical information. I think it's important that we see where we've been and where we're going. It's not real positive, but it's, it's nice to be debt-free, and it's nice to have a good budget staff to take care of us in bad times. Thank you.
Trustee Milchker.
Thanks so much, Beth. That was really well done. I just wanted to tell people that it really could have been worse. Some of the proposals were to increase the tuition instead of to $26 a credit hour, from $20 to close to $60 a credit hour, which would have really, really hurt our students. I mean, increasing the tuition, it all hurts our students, but that would have really, really been felt drastically by our students. So we fought that and won that battle. There were a few other battles. One was they wanted to make all the PE classes, all the, you know, exercise classes and PE classes and sports, sporting classes, zero credit, which would mean we'd get less reimbursement, which would also mean that students couldn't major in kinesiology or PE or, and our student athletes, many of who are honor students, would have been hurt horribly because their, their PE classes wouldn't have counted at all towards credit for graduation. So, and also, we have, one of our faculty members was, was fighting the increases in EOPS. It's Bill Hewitt was fighting the increases in, in cuts to EOPS and DSPNS, and that was going to be on a 32% level, and they did change it. So now the cuts are only going to be 16%. But I have to say, I was at, there was an open house for the returning vets to our college center that we have just opened on Friday, and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that, and it was, it was very interesting, and a lot of vets were there, and people are volunteering to help our vets. And one of the, one of the vets was, was saying that, you know, some of our returning vets are coming back with brain injuries and, and with very serious problems, and these students need DSPNS, this is Disabled Students Program and Services, assistance. And there's a waiting list, and like nine, nine students couldn't even get into it, and these are returning vets because of the cuts in these programs. And, you know, they said it was really tragic, that we have this wonderful office, and yet we couldn't offer our students some of these programs for disabled students. Also, I'm really worried about matriculation, because matriculation is such an important area to make sure that students are placed in the right classes, that if it's cut back so much, I'm afraid it's going to hurt our college students. So, I mean, how are we addressing these areas? These areas really worry me, the cuts in these particular areas. I, I know that these are statewide cuts, but I really hate to make these cuts in our district, in our colleges, personally.
I think probably I will refer that colleague, or that question over to the two presidents, because they know better what is happening on their campus, and that's really at a, at a more, you know, site level than at my level.
Why don't I start at Saddleback? First, as Beth had mentioned, we're not 100% sure yet what the final cuts will be. We know their minimum is 16% for most of these categoricals, 32 for matric, but we still don't know, so it makes it very tough. We're still waiting for those federal backfill dollars that potentially may come, but as the chancellor said, it's going to be less than the 130, probably less than even the 60 that they came, so we're not hopeful. But once again, it's only for a one-year cut. I think the bigger issue is, what we're looking at is next year. We're doing everything we can right now. The categorical programs are doing a fantastic job right now trying to deal with the 16% cuts, but really, it's going to be for next year. And I was going to talk about later in my report, but as the chancellor also mentioned, we are doing tremendous efficiency evaluations, working with our faculty, our staff, on our management, to come up with ways that we can more efficient. And that's not just about cost, by the way, as I mentioned before. It's also about the services we provide with the resources that we have, which is an efficient way to do things as well. So your concern is real. It's our concern, but a lot of it is just waiting for the news to come forward so we can go forward. But I do feel confident that we're okay for this year. It's really next year that's the real problem.
For IVC, that's basically the same. Bill Hewitt's done a wonderful job in, in trying to make the lowest acceptable cuts that can be made right now without affecting people. The question really is matriculation. That is one that tends to be heavy in personnel. And so we are looking at that very carefully. We're moving very slowly while meeting the requirements that we have. So as it looks right now, we should be fine this year. But as my colleague has said, next year will be a tougher year. All indications are that. The other thing to realize is that this appears to be a message from Sacramento that I think we should be aware of. Other colleges are having to cut, mandated to cut up to 3.4% out of the basic funds. And so that makes it that much more difficult to think about moving funds back and forth between these programs. And so it seems like a box that we're in that is intentional to me.
Thank you.
Trustee Pedrick. Professor Kozirav?
Thank you, President Wagner. The matriculation issue is one that really concerns the faculty. We could move to something like self-assessment, but the results would be disastrous, and it's extremely expensive to validate that, and it has to be approved by the state. So what we have in place right now works very effectively for our math programs, our English programs, our English or second language programs, our reading programs. And that trickles out to all the other courses. If students don't have the skills in reading, or critical thinking skills, math skills, computational skills, that will hurt every other course in which they are placed. And what'll probably happen, a lot more students will be dropping out, which really will increase the cost to the college.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Pedrick.
Well, these are really challenging times, and I appreciate the hard work of all of the administrators and our budget people. Particularly, we've just overcome the 50% law, and we're keeping that in mind, I'm sure, as we go forward. But of course, we just have to keep matriculation in place. That's what it's really all about, in my opinion. With all of that, I'm going to move the item and move approval.
Further discussion? Seeing none, item's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Gary, wherever you are. And to all of the budget people at IVC and Saddleback. Thank you. We are at 6.2, which is the basic aid priority list. And I understand the chancellor would like to address the issue first.
Yes, President Wagner. I'd like to modify my recommendation. I'd like to draw the attention of the board to page one of the exhibit. In there, you notice on the top, there are some ATEP-related items, as well as the retiree benefits and the legislative advocacy. These items were already included in the final budget that you have just approved. I'd like to pull back for now the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College recommendations of basic aid and revisit them and bring back a recommendation to the board next month. In the meantime, I'd like to modify the recommendation to ask the board to approve district IT projects, $5 million as requested, in basic aid funds, so that we can move forward in addressing IT needs in support of the colleges and the ATEP campus. Through the chancellor's update, I provided the board information on the IT projects, but if you have any questions, Vice Chancellor Bremuch will be happy to respond to it. So my recommendation, the modified recommendation is to seek board approval of district IT projects for an amount of $5 million in basic aid funds.
Thank you. Couple of trustees want to speak to that, but let me just, for the record, I was the one who had raised some questions, and in fact, this is the item that I was talking to Gary about today. But given that he is out of town, and it was my understanding directly from Gary that there was nothing that was time-sensitive with respect to these particular requests, that it was my request that we back off on the Saddleback and the IVC basic aid requests here. Let's go forward, in my view, with district IT. Let's go forward. It's already in the budget with respect to ATEP and the retiree benefits, but, but I would like the opportunity to have some issues addressed. In particular, it looks to me just wildly unbalanced. However, there is some historical data that, that might shed some light on this that I haven't seen yet, and I'm, by unbalanced, I mean 8 million versus 650,000. And there were some questions about the process that I had. So that's the purpose of the request, and I would appreciate my colleagues' consideration of that issue. And with the understanding that I have that there's nothing time-sensitive here, I would like to divide the question, deal with all of the issues other than Saddleback College and IVC first, and then my hope would be, recommendation would be, we come back in September and take a look at these numbers again. So with, with that said, Trustee Pedrick.
Well, this is really a priority list, so it sets nothing in stone, and I see no reason that it can't therefore be continued in its entirety for one meeting. As to the differential in the two colleges, Saddleback College as opposed in Irvine Valley College, if you would look at the basic aid expenditures over the past couple of years, it's been exactly the reverse. And these are needed maintenance items at Saddleback, and it would be, I think, a travesty for these not to be approved. However, I do not oppose having this continued in its entirety, not piecemeal, to next month.
Let me address, before we get to the other trustees, that is the historical data that I was talking about, that I've not had a chance to look at. It isn't a reverse. It's roughly 100 million versus 80 million, I think, are the numbers, Saddleback to IVC. So it isn't exactly a reverse, but that is the historical information that I'd like. And in terms of continuing the entire item, to the extent that there aren't objections to district IT, and that's a fact that goes, or a resource that goes to both colleges, I'm not sure why we would necessarily have to continue that as well.
Okay, well, let me respond. I don't think that anything is time-sensitive, as you just have stated, so there's no point in it not being continued with the rest of it. And if you want to address the issue of the reversal, let's look at the two campuses' enrollments and whether it should not be considerably more for Saddleback as opposed to
The IT part, the IT part might be time-sensitive because there is, there are ongoing projects that are supposed to be funded out of this 5 million. The time-sensitive was, that I addressed with Deputy Chancellor Porter, was only with respect to the 8 million and the 650,000, just for the...
Do we have someone from IT that can tell us if it's time-sensitive?
Vice Chancellor Bremici. Yes, trustee Padberg. There are parts of the IT request which are time-sensitive. For example, part of this is for hardware. Some of this hardware, it runs 24 hours a day. It has reached the end of service life, and it needs to be replaced. We've already started to have some failures because this item was carried over one month from the last time. We had a problem with the storage area network, which is on there. In addition, some of the work for our software is work for preparation for things like H1N1 virus work. And in some of our innovation products, we have a team that has been in place and is well-trained, and if we do not continue those products, we will lose some highly-trained personnel. So, yes, I would say that the IT items are time-sensitive.
Could I just follow up? If you could just tell me what the H1N1 has to do with a virus on the IT, I'd like to know.
Oh, we have, one of our software items is for emergency messaging.
Oh, I see.
And this money continues the emergency messaging. Right now, we have in place the capability to send out emergency messaging district-wide, both to continue that service as well as to upgrade it with, by integrating it with our student information system, is the item I was referring to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Lang.
Yes, first, I would like to... The mic was not on. First, I would like to move the chancellor's recommendation, which is to approve the items on the basic aid priority list, other than what's indicated for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College.
Second.
Okay. And then, my other comment beside that was, the one thing that disturbed me a little bit, frankly, about IVC's basic aid requests, where there were certain items in there, frankly, that I felt were not within the basic aid guidelines, that appeared to be for kind of routine budget items. Landscaping would be one, repair and slurry of the parking lots. And then, I had questions about the items. I think IVC probably has some very legitimate items that need to be addressed and that ought to be addressed, frankly, out of basic aid monies. I just thought the items that were indicated here were problematic for me from that standpoint. And so, I think, I'm pleased with the chancellor's recommendation. I think it's deserving of further look, and because those items are not time-sensitive, I think that makes a great deal of sense, and, you know, I think that it's a good motion.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Williams.
Well, I expect to approve the entire budget. I'd like to hear from the two presidents to see if anything in here is time-sensitive. We're not hearing, we're hearing from IT, but not from either college. May I ask both presidents to respond, is there's something in here that's time-sensitive in the next month?
Right. Nothing for IVC.
President Burnett, Saddleback, anything in there? Pardon my voice.
Well, first, I have to note that the three projects that are referred to here are for health and safety concerns, so if there's a priority for 30 days, not necessarily, but there is overall. I would have to defer unfortunately, or fortunately, to either Brandy or John. One project in particular, which is the mass science HVAC repair, and I don't know, Brandy, in our meetings, and John, does that impact our timing of the schedule you were looking at? It does not. Then it does not.
Okay. My next question is, didn't this all go through DRAQ?
No.
It didn't. None of it. Even the recommendations. Chancellor, you want to answer that?
Yeah, let me respond to that. This part of the basic aid allocation does not go through DRAQ. DRAQ deals with general fund allocations, and colleges or campuses develop their priority list, including the district services. And from there, it comes to the chancellor's executive council meetings. And in this particular case, I'd asked Deputy Chancellor Porter, working with the presidents, to develop a recommendation to me, and that's how generally we use the process to bring recommendations to the board.
Okay. Nothing further.
Trustee Melchior.
Thank you. I would suggest, because the one that seems to be very time-sensitive is, to my understanding, is the IT portion, because this is important to keep our computers running and our district running, from my understanding. So, I would suggest perhaps dividing the question and having that one be separate, and perhaps bringing the other ones back at a later date. I do have a question about...
I understand that to be essentially the motion from trustee Lang.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you. I do have a question about the H1N1 virus. My understanding is that the CDC in Atlanta has, their latest suggestion is that the schools don't close down, that they, if a student seems like they're ill, then they send the student home. If there is a student that's ill, try to keep the student home. But they really don't want to have schools be closing down right now. That's, from everything I've read, that's what they said. They're trying to come out, hopefully, with two vaccinations, perhaps, in October for H1N1. They're madly testing it right now, but hopefully, those vaccinations will be ready. But what kind of mass reports would we have to give to our college community if we're not, they're recommending not closing the schools, and we probably won't be, considering their recommendations...
You're right that they changed their recommendation from blanket closels of schools to beginning with programmatic, so within, they'll close individual programs. But however, this flu is expected, in the latest report to President Obama, to affect as many as 150 million Americans at the worst. So, it is certainly still remains a possibility that entire schools or entire departments or divisions within schools will be closed.
You are right. I mean, my sister works for the CDC, and they're very worried about it.
President, order of the day, please.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, with Vice Chancellor Bremici's explanation about the IT, I certainly will not oppose dividing the question. But just so that we're clear on what we're voting on, the top three, I understand we've already voted on in the budget. If we want to vote again, it's moot to vote again, but if we need to do that, we can do it. So, they can be included, and then the other two would be continued. Is that correct? So, what is your motion, trustee Lang?
Well, as I understand, the chancellor's recommendation, it was to approve those items that were already presented to us as part of the budget, just as you've stated, plus the IT component of this, but not Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. It was already seconded, so the motion's already out there. The only other, if it's okay, final comment that I had about it is, and I think actually trustee Williams really raised the question, and that is, by giving us, I think, some additional time to look at the college projects, I'm interested in understanding how these fit within the previous information that's been provided to the board in terms of priority basic aid projects that they've asked to be funded. Are these the same projects? Are these different projects? I think that the additional time gives us that ability.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we are going to vote on the item as amended and recommended by the chancellor. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you all. Item 6.3, this is adoption of the final ASG budget for Saddleback College. And so, let's bring the Saddleback folks up, and I will turn it to President Burnett to introduce them.
I am very proud and pleased to once again introduce to you Christina Andrews, who is our treasurer of ASG. Take it away, Christina.
Hello, and I'm happy to tell you guys that our presentation is here tonight. So, we're off to a great start already.
Could you raise the mic so we can hear you better? Thank you.
You think it's here.
I'm pretty sure it's here. I checked like four times. It's all good. All right, good evening, honorable trustees and chancellor Mather. My name is Christina Andrews, as you all know, and I'm the Saddleback ASG 2009-2010 treasurer. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you this evening. I would also like to extend our deepest gratitude to everyone who helped us through this process. Thank you to the chancellor, of course, President Burnett, Lisa Towson, the staff and students of ASIVC, as we work so closely together on this presentation, and of course, you are boarder trustees. I will now begin our presentation. So, as you may recall, our original tentative budget was accepted by you at the June meeting. These are the highlights of changes that have occurred to our budget since we presented to you then. As you can see, we have an increased beginning balance at a total difference of $290,055 due to an increased projected revenue in our ASP stamp sales and the cafeteria and bookstore revenue. Our budget process takes place in the spring, but we went through a secondary summer allocation process when we received our final beginning budget number. Due to the increase in beginning balance, we were able to increase allocation to the following areas you can see before you. Competition and leadership awards, as well as the scholarship and awards category, were increased by $17,000. The emergency book loan fund program, which was originally allocated $5,000, was increased to an additional $18,005, which totals $23,005. The Osher Foundation was originally allocated $19,740 and has been allocated an additional $15,000, totaling $34,740, making the total increase to the scholarship and awards category alone $50,005. There are also additional allocations made to several other deserving categories across the campus, including a new DSP co-curricular enhancement program. Before you, you'll see our statement of financial position, the formatting which was outlined to us, as you've seen before, by the district, to correlate closely with what you see from the district and both of our colleges. The estimated beginning balance is the number that includes what you would think of as a rollover, and it totals $290,055, and also includes our emergency reserves, which is at $96,418. Our minimum guaranteed revenue is the minimum commissions guaranteed per contract, and less our college assessments, as you can see before you. $188,000 are comprised of the following: the utilities for the bookstore at $40,000, utilities for the cafeteria at $58,000, and one ASG-funded contracted classified staff position in the student development office that ASG elected to continually support at $90,000. ASG also joined Team Approach in resolving space issues for newly-expanding the outreach and veterans programs on our campus by giving up a large office space, conference room, and game room. But the resulting renovation and move expenses explain the slightly larger number reflected on the line with college assessments, but not a college assessment, it's just included on the line as a similar expense. So, our minimum guaranteed revenue is $532,339, plus our ASP activity stamp sales. We are taking advantage of a previously underutilized revenue source. I believe you guys are all familiar with it, as I passed them out at last month's board meeting, and I brought it visually, but it seems to have disappeared within the process of this. But you all have your own. So, there's been a really positive reaction to our fund card so far, and we're being really proactive in raising money and fundraising for the fund card. And we've been pretty conservative in our projection of revenue that we have before you. So, we have initiated profit-sharing programs with clubs and athletics teams, and we feel like, in this time of economic need, a $160 card of discounts, it's worth about $160, for $10 is pretty amazing for our students. As you can see, we have our uses of funds, which are split into aggregate categories, and these will be explained fully further in the presentation. So, this next slide is a pie chart that represents our uses of funds based on the total sources of funds. It is a visual representation of the previous slide that includes the percentage of the total budget. Also, you'll notice the breakdown of the contingency, emergency reserves, allocation for anticipated mid-year requests, scholarships and awards categories. I would like to emphasize especially that 53.8% of our budget goes, which is student support, campus life, and co-curricular aggregate categories added together, goes to participatory activities and events for students. Adding in the 15.9%, 9.8% for scholarships and awards brings it to nearly 75%. And considering another 5% is reserved just for ideas and opportunities that frequently arise throughout the school year, nearly 80% of our budget is accounted for. Saddleback has over 135 chartered clubs, and typically 40 to 50 are active each school year. ASG tries diligently to consider the variety of interests in the nearly 25,000 enrolled students with our distribution of funds. For more information on the breakdown, you can obviously see your appendix that has been provided for you. It's labeled ASG allocations and aggregate categories. So, our next slide is campus life. Besides the text you see before you, we believe campus life to be programs that aid in recruitment and ensure the retention and persistence of all students. Campus life includes programs like International Film Festival, inter-club council operations, which supports all the clubs on campus, and the multicultural month. Our next aggregate category is co-curricular programs. We believe these to be programs that enhance student learning, augmenting the academic experience, and helping students achieve their academic and career goals. Co-curricular programs include the speech and forensics team, California Nursing Students Association, the Lariat, and the Scholar-Athlete Awards. Next, you'll see ASG operations. This represents the operating budget that allows ASG to be as self-supporting as possible, including in this category are the following: about $12,000 for supplies duplication, others such as central office support, $8,500 for leadership development and recognition, and then $52,000 for our revenue generating items, such as the ASP discount card, which we've been over, and $25,000 for part-time project specialist positions, which are internship positions given to students. So, this slide breaks down our contingency allocation for anticipated mid-year requests and scholarships. Each minimum contribution to these categories is derived as a stated percentage of the total projected revenue as mandated by our ASG bylaws. This total projection of revenue was $940,394, as you saw, and includes all minimum guaranteed revenue plus the ASP stamp production. So, our last aggregate category is student support. These are the programs that we believe, these are program grants that are supported by ASG funding that have far-reaching effect on all Saddleback students, validate their success, and provides opportunities to prepare for their majors. Student support includes Veterans Awareness Day, the EOPS Winter Workshop, and the Scholarship Ceremony. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Yes, there are, and guess who it comes from?
I could only guess.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, first of all, Christine, I wanted to congratulate you on an excellent presentation. I'm very impressed with the job that you've done, that you did, and also, congratulations to you and the rest of your group on really a terrific, I think, budget that you put together. Couple of questions, though.
Of course.
One is, well, the other thing is, is I do intend, by the way, we're, at this point, I'll move for approval of the Saddleback budget.
Move in second.
My questions are, I'd be interested, and also, really same question for IVC as well when we get to it, will be, how do the minimum guarantee amounts historically compare with the actual guarantee? I suspect that's some of the reason why we end up with fairly large ending balances, is because you're showing minimum amounts in your budget and doing probably substantially more than that, or relatively speaking, substantially more than that. And so, I'd just be curious historically what that looks like. And then, just secondly, a recommendation, I think one of the things I did like particularly about the IVC budget was, they're showing the figures for prior year requests that weren't included in your detail, and I think that's interesting information to have, and informative information to have, and just would throw that out to you as a possible recommendation for presentation in the future.
Thank you very much. To your first question, our minimum guaranteed revenue, that was something, historically, I don't know, because this is my first time developing the budget, but we recently mandated as... as in, in the spring, we redid our bylaws to mandate exactly what our minimum guaranteed revenue, how that would work out, so it was 10%, 10% and 5% relatively. So I don't know how it's worked historically, previously to me, but that's how it's working this year. I don't know, Audra. Oh, the contract services, the, our contract revenue? Do you want to specify? I think she understands better than I do.
The students have indeed looked to their minimum guaranteed revenue that's held within the contracts as the only thing that they could guarantee as the revenue source. So they've shied away from, I think there have been years past where they have actually projected the revenue a bit above those minimum guarantees, and it's a bit of shaky ground for them, because if something happens, we don't pull in that revenue, then they spent money they don't have.
No, and I fully understand the need to be conservative in developing the budget, but I'd still be interested if there is that kind of historical data to show how the budgeted numbers have compared, or how the actual numbers have compared against the budgeted minimum guaranteed revenue.
We can, you know, I think we could provide that to you. One thing, for example, last year, they projected they would get $40,000 from their ASP stamp and ended up bringing in almost $70,000. So yes, it is always the case, and it's something that we could show.
Anything else?
I don't know.
Well, go ahead.
That's fine. Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to like speed ahead if you have another question.
Trustee Padberg.
Call the question.
All right. All right. Seeing no further questions or comments from the board, let me just make a quick comment. The $150,000 number for scholarships is a very healthy number. That is an issue that's been raised by the board a number of times, and it is very nice to see that healthy number being put right back in the students, and you're to be commended for a great budget, you're to be commended for responding to your, essentially to your constituents and your friends out there, so that's nice to see. The question has been called, let's vote. Thank you for that presentation. The matter carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
And let me add a thanks to Ms. DePodova also for your help with the, with the budget. Thank you. All right. Oh, you can clap for, that's good. We are at item 6.4. It is the IVC Associated Student Government Budget, and let me turn to President Rockmore for the appropriate introductions.
Thank you very much. We have tonight Denise Batista, the President of the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College, and along with her is Ronald Smothers, the Vice President of the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College. I'm very happy to see them both, but I'm especially happy to see Ronald because he was not redeployed with the Marine Corps this summer as he had expected. Ronald, thank you for your service.
Good evening, President Wagner, Chancellor Mather, members of the board, President Rockmore, President Burnett, and leaders of the governance groups. It is our pleasure to bring you the ASIVC final adopted budget for 2009 to 2010. I would like to begin with the highlights of changes that occurred once we received our final budget information from the District Business Office. As you can see, we have given some one-time increases to campus life, co-curricular programs, operations, scholarships, and student support. We believe this is necessary from the increase in the number of students that we will be serving this year. With our increased ending fund balance, we have additional funds in that category as well. I will now pass on the presentation to Mr. Smothers.
Good evening, first of all. Our next page are sources of funds. Our beginning fund balance was the major change for tentative budget in June. We received our final budget funds in July, when all funds from the bookstore, cafeteria, and ASG stamp, which is our activity sticker for the summer, is known. We have an increase of $183,275 to our beginning fund balance. There is no change to the minimum guaranteed revenue and no change to our estimated ASG activity or drink funding revenue. Our total sources of funds is adjusted to reflect the increased beginning fund balance. That figure is now $598,275. There are, these are uses of fund categories, and the following pages you will see examples of the, of the categories. Our pie chart on page three reflects the increase to our budget and depicts the percentage of allocations to the use of funds category. Page four, our campus life was increased due to the additional student enrollment numbers that we now have. And on page five, you will see our co-curricular programs were funded to the 2007, 2008 funding in the June tentative budget, but we were able to fund the 2008, 2009 allocations now. Students felt that this was the area that they wanted to support to attract other students to IVC. All the, all our programs are feeling the increase of prices by the economic problems that our whole nation is experiencing. On page six is our ASIVC operations, and they receive only a small increase in funding, which allowed us a little breathing room to operate. On page seven is, that is our contingency reserve, mid-year requests, and scholarship portions, and it was increased by $120,037. The contingency emergency reserve are 10% of total sources of funds minus beginning fund balance. The allocations for anticipated mid-year requests are the portions of beginning fund balance, funds to be used for a one-time allocation. This will no, will not be an ongoing expense, and will, and we will review the requests from the spring that will, that we were not able to fund for consideration. We also have a constitutional process for other one-time requests. Our scholarship fund now includes the original $60,000 dedicated to our students and $40,000 for the OSHA Endowment Scholarship Program. This totals $100,000 for scholarships. Our last page, which is page eight, covers student support for programs that are not competitive but serve our students that would not have other funding from the college. We increased some of the funding from, to 2008, 2009 request on a one-time basis to allow the programs to support the growth of students we are experiencing at IVC.
And I just want to give you a little update on our textbooks as well. We did mention in June that we had a book loan program and $15,000 worth of textbooks for the library reserve, our book exchange, and our work with the bookstore and faculty to have used textbooks available. And we expect to bring a textbook rental program through Fallat whenever the results of their pilot program is complete. They are piloting that program currently at Coast Community College District. We have also allocated in this year's budget another $5,000 to add to the library reserve. And ASIVC officers receive $300 to help purchase their textbooks for this fall. At the end of the semester, all textbooks are returned to us for the students to select books for next, for the spring semester. We are building an ASIVC textbook library to assist the students who get involved with the college as an incentive to join student government. Other things we do include awards to high school students for Senior Day. We give away $150 worth of book cards to assist in purchasing their textbooks, as well as paying for 12 units for an incoming freshman. Both of these giveaways were cashed in this semester. We conclude this presentation, and we ask for questions if you're ready.
You don't need to ask. Trustee Lang will jump in there. You're up first again.
Congratulations on a fine presentation and all the hard work that was put into developing this budget, and I'll make the motion to approve the budget.
And I'll second it again.
A couple of quick questions for you. One, Helen, I think you probably may have more perspective on is the same question I had for Saddleback, which is historically how the revenues have compared against the minimum guarantees that are included in the budget. The other question that I had that I think hopefully the students may be able to answer is, is I noticed in the detail that there was no ASIVC requested allocations, although there were allocations made, of course, to fund student government, and just wanted to make sure that in fact they're not exempt from the process of requesting funds, and there's something going on there, maybe you can talk to that. And then secondly, you had some sort of up and down arrows in the coral and chorus budget numbers that I noticed, and I didn't, wasn't quite sure what was going on there, whether you had combined categories there. Those were my questions.
Let me talk about the guaranteed. We have, across the years, the history of our guarantee through our contracts has been fairly consistent. As the bids go out, we get better contracts coming in. We, that's where our guarantee comes in, but when we go beyond a certain sales number figure, and by the way, that's also includes the sales of Saddleback and IVC combined, is where we get those larger figures. And those began to grow in the last three years, so the, in the past, we would maybe have $25,000 or $35,000 beyond the guaranteed income. But now it's, it's based upon some pretty large sales from Saddleback, it goes up to $5 million. So when you hit that $5 million, you get 13.5%. And if it goes, if it's a little bit beyond, below that or above that, you get an additional 1%. So that's where we get those increases. And we don't know those coming in because we have two more sessions of classes in the summer, so you're continuing to sell all during the summer, and that's at the end of May, June, and all the way through June, and then our income comes in, in the end of June or the middle of July. We're still getting those checks, so we never know how much that is. And we don't know where we are above that $5 million. That also goes for the cafeteria. Since renovating our cafeteria, bringing in a new vendor, they're now meeting a commission that we had in a contract probably five years ago of $50,000. They're doubling a $25,000 commission, which has increased us by that much that we, that is beyond the guarantee. And again, they're open in the summer, they're selling all summer, those known figures don't come in until end of June, July, beginning of July. And we also now sell our ASIVC activity sticker in the summer, so we can continue to offer the ability for students to get movie tickets, amusement park tickets, and those types of tickets. We have to have some way to buy them, so we've increased our activity sticker sales as well. And then it also includes unused funds, and that's why we end up with that large of ending fund balance, but we don't know it until, thank goodness, we're doing a tentative and a final adopted, because now we know those figures when we come to you in August, and we can include those figures.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of. What I don't know is historically what the delta, the differences between actual and final budgeted numbers, and I'm presuming that that is really what's largely responsible for the large carryover balances
Right, that's right.
That are, you know, arising from year to year.
Uh huh. I'm not, much I'm an accountant, but from what I understand, when you figure your budget, and we do our budget, we have to do actual guarantee, and then we do estimated on sales of activity stickers and things like that. And we do it based upon history. At one time, we used to sell $50,000 in activity sticker. It went down to $14,000 for about four years. And now we're coming back, because now we offer more benefits, and, and we've promoted it better, and so now we're up to at least $22,000, maybe $25,000, $26,000. But nothing like we used to at $50,000. It's, it's a big change.
Sure. And again, I have no quarrel with being conservative for budget purposes, but at some point, you start to compound
Right.
The large balances that are going forward, and there's an argument, I suppose, that could be made that students aren't getting perhaps as much of an allocation as they otherwise should because of the fact that we're carrying over these large balances.
Well, I think now we're becoming more consistent to where we can now, after two and a half, or almost three years, to where we are getting those figures more solid. You can now give a better estimate of what you foresee, you know, like I think the district budget showed their estimated income, the incoming taxes. Now, they do a very good job of identifying that they're very close to the taxes that are coming in. I think our, our pattern now is that we can get a better grasp of that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to answer those other questions?
To answer your first question, an additional $3,000 was added to the ASIVC operating, operation, operations funding, and that, that $3,000 would go to pay for more office supplies, the lounge workers, contract services, and additional equipment repair if needed. Could you ask the second question again?
Well, no, actually, let's go back to the first question. On your, I don't know what page this is, next to last page of the detail by category under ASIVC operations, you've got a column for 2009, 2010 requests, which are all zeros.
Oh, we moved a lot of those categories out of ASIVC operations. That's why we didn't make any requests in those categories.
Okay. But you did make allocations of funds to each of those categories.
Yes.
Okay.
We just, we just moved those.
The other question had to do with the up and down arrows
Yes.
In the next category under student support, and it seemed like things were getting combined in the coral category.
It is, and it's because they asked for like $16,000 or something for different categories. We, we didn't have enough to fund the large amount, so we give them one amount, then they choose how it's going to be used, whether it's going to be used music, transportation, rental, advertising. So we give one amount, they decide how they want to use it.
Okay.
That was it.
Call the question.
All right. And let's, seeing no further questions, let's wrap this up. I think there's a quick comment from the Chancellor, and we will vote on the item.
Okay, thank you. Two quick comments. One, again, thank you to both IVC and Saddleback as student leaders for presenting the budget. Very well done. Secondly, with respect to the textbooks issue, I would just like to mention that recently California Secretary of Education announced a digital textbook initiative for K through 12. And in the next few days, I'm hoping to be talking with him to see if we can work together in terms of a digital textbook program for community colleges as well.
We commented on that the last presentation, because we did read that Schwarzenegger and State was working on that, and we believe it will come to the community colleges, so you're right on target with that. Thank you.
All right. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you to the students and Ms. Locke for your help. Let's go back to the consent calendar now, and I will entertain requests to pull items from the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Trustee Fuentes.
I'd like to pull 5.3 and 5.5.
Any other requests to pull items? All right.
Approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Moved to second, and let's vote on the balance of the consent calendar. Trustees Jay, Padberg, and Williams, please. Thank you. And the consent calendar carries unanimously. Item 5.3, Saddleback College's Oxford Summer Abroad Program. Trustee Fuentes. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin by moving approval of this item, which I will do the same thing with 5.5. I just wanted to comment, though, that, you know, once again, this has been a mantra of mine year after year, that we continue to see programs for foreign travel at a very high cost figure. This one in excess of $7,000, the one to Spain in excess of $6,000, $6,500. I would just hope that we can broaden the diversity of our offerings to find programs that are not so expensive. I think we have many, a working-class resident, a constituent of our district, that's a lot of money for kids, that's a lot of money for their parents, that's a lot of money to anybody today. I heard earlier, trustee Padberg, excuse me, trustee, excuse me, trustee Milchiker regaled the point of the prospects earlier this year of going from $20 to $60 range for tuition and the effect that has on students in this economy. We ought also be conscientious about the price of these programs. The Spanish language and the Hispanic culture can well be taught in our hemisphere. There are opportunities at more reasonably priced opportunities as are offered in our other districts in the Orange County community. With that, I would move approval.
Is there, moved to second, trustee Lang?
Yes, I was just going to move approval of-
Excuse me, move approval of both items that were pulled, 5.3 and 5.5.
All right. No further discussion on 5.3, let's vote on the item. Matter carries with trustee Milchiker absent. 5.5, also trustee Fuentes.
Move approval.
Is there-
Second.
All right, panelists vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with trustee Milchiker absent. We are at 6.5, I believe, and an item here for discussion and/or approval, these are revisions to the board policies.
Move approval.
Well, for approval?
Yes.
All right, moved for approval.
Is this the first write-up piece?
No, the second.
Second, okay.
All right. Seeing no comments, let's vote. There's two items again.
It's not.
Yeah, it's not.
Probably the operator.
Matter carries unanimously with one operator error. 6.6, this is for review and study.
Move approval for review and study.
All right, more policy revisions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
I'm voting for Lang this time.
There we go, matter carries unanimously. 6.7, nominating committee for the Orange County Committee on School District Organizations. Move approval.
Second.
All right, moved to second, trustee Williams.
Is there anyone interested so that I may nominate you to serve?
Trustee Lang.
I didn't quite understand why you weren't-
I will do it, but I didn't want to nominate myself. It doesn't matter if someone's interested in serving.
Then let's nominate you.
I nominate John Williams.
Second the vote.
Second! You were fishing, why didn't you just say something?
It's one of those things, you leave the room and you get nominated.
What did you do to offend Marcia?
All right, the nomination of trustee Williams is on the table somewhat circuitously, but there it lies. All right, further discussion? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Academic Personnel Action Item 6.8.
Move approval.
Second.
Second, discussion, he says no.
No changes.
He said no changes. Discussion on the item? Let's vote. All right, matter carries unanimously. 6.9.
I have five changes, my apologies.
All right, this is the-
I'm ultimately minor. I'd ask the board to remove item B3 on page four and C5 on page five.
C5 on page five. Okay.
And to, and on C6 to add the words after, on the third line, it says seek authorization to establish a part-time, if you could insert the words in there, "not to exceed an average of" before 29.
Okay.
And I've got a couple more still.
Keep going.
On page seven, on G3, we'd ask that the board change the dates from October 1st and October 2nd to December. We anticipate that lasting longer.
December 1st and 2nd or December?
Yes, December 1st is on the fourth line, and the very last one is December 2nd. So, and then the very last change is on G10, administrator want to come back to work early, which is kind of cool. From August, you'll see on the fourth line, her assignment ends on August 24th, want to change that to the 21st. And on the very last line of G10 to effective August 24th.
Move approval as amended.
Second.
Discussion, let's vote. Trustee Williams. Matter carries unanimously.
Thank you.
610 has been removed. We are to our information reports, 7.1, Basic Aid Report. All right, 7.2, Facilities Plan Status Report. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I guess this might be-
I guess this would be directed at Ms. Delaney. I noticed under an item number, I guess it would be Saddleback, item number eight, that it looked like we were having some difficulty with the contractor under the village expansion project, and I'm wondering why, should we not be looking at replacing that contractor, given what's been described here and the issues that we're having?
That's a very good question. In fact, we did contemplate going to the surety and requesting replacement. We wrote the letter, it's in the meeting minutes. It was determined that the loss of time and the delay on the project would be too great, and that the contractor, for the length of time that we discussed surety replacement, really did pick up speed and began addressing the project a little more appropriately. Since that time, we've fallen back into hard times with this contractor. At this point, we're doing our best to cut our losses, but it's expected that we'll be assessing liquidated damages, which will then prevent us from experiencing him in return. Liquidated damages is one of the reasons that we can prohibit future biddings on our projects. So you're 100% correct, this is a problem contractor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. 7.3, no questions. 7.4, Quarterly Investment Report. 7.5, Tyree Trust Fund. 7.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report. All right, we are at item eight, and that is the reports from various and sundry folk. I don't know if you're various or sundry, we'll start with you in any event.
I'll be both, how's that? Anyway, first, I wanted to welcome back trustee Jay, and it's good to have you healthy and happy back here. Second, I also want to welcome back, of course, our students. This last week was the first week, today's the actual official first week of seven days of classes, so Bianca, Delaney, and all the other students, hopefully you're having a wonderful first week. Enrollment, as you heard, is up. I would like to note that while we have enrollment up, we have increased our productivity and our efficiencies on our enrollment management, so actually, we're educating more students, if you want to put it, for less cost, if that makes a little bit of equation, to simplify it. In-service was a wonderful, a wonderful week. We had the highest enrollment, or I'm sorry, highest attendance by faculty as well as classified staff. It really was a terrific affair. I handed out to you an annual state of the college, for those who did not see it, that I may be doing on an annual basis, it gives you a better idea of what happened over the year. We also welcomed back 12 new faculty members, as you heard, and we kicked off our strategic planning and accreditation, as well as many faculty development activities. Thank you to our academic senate. Would like to give a personal thanks to trustee Padberg and trustee Williams. They attended the first Board of Governors meeting for the fall semester, and it was very good. We have a lot of new members, Board of Governors members as well. As you know, these are challenging economic times, but our entire college faculty, staff, and management are working, as I mentioned earlier, to find better efficiencies we can do, where we can do more services for our students at the same time, and better utilization of our resources. I handed out also to you the performance in visual arts for the fall and spring schedule. I hope you'll join us for a few. There will be a couple President's Club events, and I will certainly get you invitations specially to those. Finally, as one of the trustees mentioned, we will be having remembrance ceremony on 9/11, it will be 10:00 a.m., and 9/11 ceremony is on, September 11th falls on a Friday, the 11th, so you all invited, you'll hear more about it. And finally, as you might have also heard, we did open, brand-new this week, the first one-stop Veterans Center for our returning troops, our veterans and their families, and we're very excited about that, and you'll hear more about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. President Rock.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, for the president's opening, I would like to thank President Don Wagner and Chancellor Mather for attending that, appreciate it very much, meant a lot to us. The 9/11 event, we're going, we're very happy to have Sandra Hutchins, Orange County Sheriff, as a keynote speaker, along with Dave Maggert, the Chief of Police, Irvine, and also the new Orange County Fire Chief, whom I haven't met yet, and unfortunately, I do not have his name memorized. If you attended last year, you may remember Professor Matthew Tressler singing at that event. He will be back, and I hear that we may have one additional faculty member that will join him. So please come out for that, it again is on 9/11, and I believe it's at 11 o'clock, but you'll get a formal invitation to that. Also, up on your dais there, I think you have a little postcard for our Casino Night fundraiser for student scholarships, and I hope you'll take advantage of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Provenance peoples.
Thank you. First of all, my thanks to both the college presidents for the invitation and activities that the ATEP staff participated in at both colleges during staff development, and also in participating in the chancellor's opening session, and thank you. I'm pleased to indicate, as I introduced earlier today, the filling of all the administration positions at ATEP. Now we've got a complete staffing for administrators, including the Director of ICACT and our Dean of Instruction and Student Services, so we're certainly getting more active in connections to the two colleges' faculty and leadership in order to generate additional program activities that may someday move to ATEP. We, I've been chatting for a couple months about potential grants we're going after. The staff at ATEP, working with both colleges, over this last month, has completed and successfully submitted three major proposals. A $3.6 million grant, working with Saddleback College for prototyping and rapid manufacturing equipment. A $5 million proposal, working through IVC for photonics, optics, and laser equipment. And then the, this Monday, we finished and turned in a $1.9 million proposal, again, through Saddleback College, that would actually facilitate improvements to our existing small campus to better support high-tech labs and manufacturing equipment, as we've been proposing. So, in another month or so, we'll see how those play out in getting potentially some of these federal funds. Also, working with Tracy Daly and the chancellor, looking at possibly doing some additional studies through the Orange County Business Council, so we can better determine some of the educational gaps and opportunities for new programs. We might more appropriately focus our energies in the appropriate areas for program development. Let's see, I'm going to skip. Working, and a fourth area of grant activity is working with our partners in Texas, Optech, which is part of our lasers and optics and laser program. We worked with them for submitting a group proposal with four colleges nationally, and actually, it was a letter of intent, and we've been invited to go ahead and turn in that full proposal, which is due next month, for approximately $800,000, $800,000, which we would be probably getting about one-fifth of that, or 20%. Lastly, ATEP launched our first monthly newsletter, and I hope you've seen a copy. We sent that out about last Thursday, and it's called @ATEP, and we hope to do that monthly, if not sooner, as important and exciting activities take place at ATEP. Thank you.
Thank you. President Gabriel.
Good evening, and thank you very much. And trustee Jay, it's good to have you back with us. And I have a very important announcement to make tonight, I'm so excited. This will be my last board meeting as academic senate president for a while. Lisa Davis Allen will be taking over, and she's right behind me here. And I'm hoping that we can continue the wonderful relationship that we've had with the IVC Academic Senate. Also, you know that you can call Lisa when you have questions with anything pertaining to the senate, and of course, you can still call me, I'll be attending senate meetings, but now on the other side of the table. Also, I want to mention two things. One is that I'm hopeful that you recognize that the IVC Academic Senate represents the voice of the faculty, and that individual faculty members that come before you and have individual statements to make may reflect their individual opinion only, and is not the voice of the faculty or the senate. So when Lisa and I come before you, I'm usually, I have been for the past six years, speaking as the voice of the senate, so that the faculty deliberate issues, come up with consensus, and then I bring that information to you. Second thing is, on the same note, is that there's stuff that's put in print sometimes by, or digitally, by individual faculty members, and that information doesn't represent the faculty voice as well. And I know that we've had a long history and tradition in this district of certain people writing certain things that actually sometimes are quite inaccurate, inflammatory, and in my personal opinion, I'm sorry that the First Amendment protects it, but it does. However, again, Lisa Davis Allen is your connection for the voice of the senate, and I can give you the past voice of the senate now. So Lisa Davis Allen, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Professor Allen. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Wendy for her years of dedicated service in doing, I think, a tremendous job of representing IVC's faculty, and I think you've obviously been a real credit to the institution and done a great job, so appreciate everything you've done.
Professor Cosgrove.
Thank you.
See if you get applause after you're done.
I get applause all the time.
It takes resignation, I think, but-
Go for it. Are you requesting it? Thank you. Two items, one is the department chair task force, I'd like to know where that stands. This is an issue that is becoming more sensitive on our campus as more responsibilities are placed on department chairs. And in order maybe to expedite it for ourselves, we are sending out a survey to all chairs and former chairs to ask them a number of questions. I'm glad to share this with the task force, with the faculty association, with the board, if they wish to see the results of it. But it's an attempt to resolve a problem that is becoming more and more noticeable, and more and more people are being, are concerned about not stepping forward to do this work. So it's something I would urge you to, since you did charge the task force to do certain things, to get that task force moving. The other thing is something that all of us are affected by, and that's accreditation. Tomorrow, we'll have our first hearing committee of the fall, and we will assess where we, what work we did over the summer, and to reinstate those members of the various standard committees that need to go forward. And we're shooting for, of course, October, this October, to get a first draft in, which we'll present to the body at the college, administrators, faculty, staff, and those representative students, and to you, a sense of where we stand in that first draft. And again, it is a draft, but the amount of documentation doing something like this is enormous. The amount of research is extensive, and I want to thank the people who are chairing the standards and all those people who have worked on them.
Thank you. Professor Hagerty.
My turn. [applause]
My fault. We're glad you're done, Bob. Thank you very much, President Wagner.
If you resign, you get a standing O up here. Just so you know.
I wonder what are you going to do? I got something for you. Thank you, anyway. Personally, I'd like to point out is, I'd like to also thank, I mean, welcome, excuse me, welcome back Bill Jay. Bill, as a trustee, has proven himself to be a friend of the Faculty Association, as well as a friend of both colleges and the district, so welcome back, Bill, and stay healthy, we need you. I also would like to thank the trustee members, administrators who attended the Faculty Association luncheon, it was very well-attended, as well as the other activities put in service. I was glad that trustee, excuse me, Chancellor, Chancellor Mather was willing to speak to the faculty at the luncheon in regards to issues of mutual concern, and I feel that the association and the chairs are working together closely along those lines of efficiencies, because I think we can do a lot better in regards to governance and working out our problems instead of spending money on lawyers to resolve issues. So thank you for your presentation and your support at the luncheon. I was talking to Bob, and the president said that this was first week of class, for me it's the second week of classes. We've had classes all last week, and so we're getting the second week. And I have to say, the numbers that you indicated are impressive in regards to the number of students that we're serving, but also remember, we're also turning students away. I had to turn away students, students away from classes, because it just, just wasn't enough room in the classroom, there's a certain number of students that need our assistance. So I hope that in some way we find ways to not deny students' access and serve that additional need that's going unmet. I wanted to congratulate the board for showing leadership and your demonstration of wisdom in approving the scheduled maintenance today, but oh, well. Thank you very much.
Trustee Williams.
Well, Lee, I just wanted to thank the association, you already jumped ahead of me on that, for hosting the luncheon again at the in-service. So I attended the luncheon, it was a lot of fun, it was a good morning, good overall chancellor's opening session, but thanks again to the association for hosting the luncheon.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First off, some of the things that our student government has done before school started was we really got to get to know each other. We were able to go to UCLA and see how a student government works on, at the University of California level, which was really nice. And we also did a ropes course in San Juan, where we learned a lot about ourselves and our peers we will be working with, and a lot about leadership. We're really excited that school has officially started, and our first meetings will be tomorrow and Thursday. There will, we will be signing up our members to serve on various campus committees, such as standards, food and beverage, and bookstore. Also, we are working very hard on pulling together our first blood drive, which is September 22nd, and we're working very hard on pulling together homecoming, which is October 10th. And so we're very excited for the school year to start, and hopefully all will run smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening, and welcome back. Saddleback College's Classified Senate has been moving forward with a plan this year to complete the Saddleback College Classified Handbook. I look forward to taking and working with HR to find out what they are laying out for their guidelines, so that we can go along the same roads, answer some maybe different questions, and produce a document that will be beneficial for the campus at large. This year, we are going forward with the idea of trying to come back and help the campus Usually, we do a lot of different things during the year, and spend money on books and different classes that people want to take. This year, we're trying to take and gain funds through different events that we'll be doing, to take and be able to put money back into Saddleback and some of the programs that are losing funding. And for that, good evening. Thank you.
Ms. Bohany, on behalf of the IVC Classified.
Classified rep, wow, I lost what I was going to say. But anyhow, we had our very first meeting in in-service week, a formal meeting for the semester. It was very well-attended, and we kind of will review our path for the new year. We talked about our new philosophy, which is to allow our officers to attend the varied meetings that this position holds, and therefore we can share the wealth of opportunity to be at these meetings, the board policy meetings, the cabinet, DUCET, et cetera. And not only that, but also to kind of recruit people for future positions or postings like this one, so everybody gets a little bit of an opportunity to know what we're doing. So that was kind of our new path and our new philosophy that we're trying to convey this year. We also have a very important meeting coming up on September 30th, which Vice President Craig Justice, along with our new Instructional Coordinator of Academics Programs, Wendy Gabriela, they will be presenting an accreditation report that we are hoping to also to videotape, so she doesn't have to do the repetition over and over about what accreditation is, and for people also to review it and know exactly where we stand on accreditation, and receive more participation through Classified Senate. For our October meeting, we also have booked Chief Will Glenn to talk about the pandemic and its awareness, and also Nurse Chris Hockstead will be attending this important meeting. So we are trying to establish every meeting with a presentation to correlate what's happening with the college, and bridging and being participant with what's happening at the college all along. So our meetings are going to be kind of short and kind of more video, email presentation, website presentations. All our reports are going to be posted in our website, and so all classified staff can really review what's happening, along with attending the presentation in each meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Worth your applause. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.